All right, graphics have been dropped. Again, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I have 7:03, is that correct, clerk?
7:03 is correct, Mayor.
Very well, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll just recite the Pledge of Allegiance together. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Liberty. Justice. For all.
Thank you so much. Father God, right now, we just want to pause and say thank you for just being God all by yourself. Right now, we just want to pause and just ask that you come into our hearts and our minds, that we do the business of the village of Woodline, and what is right and what is best. And right now, God, we just want to ask that you comfort those as we approach Memorial Day. We just want you to comfort those that have lost a family and loved ones. And we just ask that you give them a peaceful night. And these blessings we ask in Jesus's name forsake, amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Poehl.
Present.
Kenneth F. Bue.
Present.
Robert Lawson.
Present.
Melissa Dero.
Present.
Rosemary Brown.
Present.
Esther Boy.
Here.
Garrett Burke Halter.
Present.
All right, there he is, Mr. Burke Halter is on with us. A reading and disposal of the previous minutes from the council meeting from April the 27th. Are there any questions, concerns, additions to those minutes in front of us? If there are none, I need a motion to approve these minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting on April 27th, 2021. A second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Aye.
Nonnaise, very well, all right. We'll go down to the appointments confirmation. We have some police confirmations. Chief, are you on the line with us? I did, I thought I heard or seen. Is he on the line with us, correct?
I'm here, I'm here, ma'am.
Okay, Chief, go ahead and take it from there.
The council members should have received a bio on four individuals that we're considering for employment. We are asking that council and the mayor's office give strong consideration with those applicants that we submitted. With the assistance of the mayor and Tim who sat in on the interviews, we have moved our process along to where we have invested time and money into the applicants that have been brought before you tonight. So we would like for you to consider those applicants so that we can move forward with the hiring and bringing those individuals on board as soon as possible.
Does anybody have any questions for Chief Tillman and the officers that are in your packet tonight? If there are no questions for Chief Tillman.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't see my hand, I had it up.
I apologize, go ahead.
Okay, I read through these applicants and I'd already told you, Chief, I really feel good about your selection of applicants here and you all sat down to interview and we interviewed them and go through the process and thank you very much. I think you, seems like you have a good group here. And I am very much in favor of what you've done and I thank you, I want to tell you, thank you for your hard work.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Also, along with that, I was hoping that the draft for the offer letter would have been completed. I have not heard anything, I've been on vacation, so maybe Jerry can speak to that, having them sign that conditional offer in terms of employment.
Okay. I'll give you a shout off, I'll give you a shout out to the meeting about that, Chief.
Okay.
Council, do we have any questions about the officers again that is in front of us? I do want to confirm or to present to council that these are the recommendations that has been brought to me and is confirmed by the manager. So again, these are just the confirmations that has come forward and I'm presenting this to council. Again, is there anything, any questions about that? Because I would like to get those offer letters to them as soon as tomorrow.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't have a question, just a comment. I just wanted to say that I agree with Ms. Boyd, looking at the slate of candidates, there's a lot of diversity there, which I think is great. I know that's something that we've been talking about as we've been talking about hiring police officers. So it's really great to see that diversity among those candidates that are coming in to be officers.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Tillman.
Yes. And just to add that, Vice Mayor, I know that the chief had been challenged on going in that direction and we've had some challenges over the time, but I'm seeing some positive movement in that area in terms of developing a diverse group of officers. So I'm pleased with what we see and what's being presented in front of us tonight, so thank you as well. All right, so Chief, again, I'll give.
So is all four of them?
That is correct.
And so what does that bring our staff into?
We will reach our complement of 16, so we will be where we need to be to operate as we've been operating in years past, so that will also help out in other areas such as overtime.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, all right.
So to move forward, we would need a motion to approve the hiring of each individual.
Yep, that was my next thing I was gonna say, but thanks, Emily, I like that to keep me on my toes. All right, so what I like to do is, it's four of them, and so what I need, I'm going to put the motions or ask for the motion to go on the floor. So we'll begin with, I need a motion to approve the confirmation of Caleb Morissette. And if I mispronounced that, Chief, I apologize, is that correct? He.
Yes, Mayor, go ahead, you're doing fine.
Okay, all right, so with that being said, I need a motion for the confirmation and appointment of Caleb Morissette as a patrol officer here in the village of Woodline.
I'll make the motion for the appointment of Caleb Morissette as a patrol officer.
A second.
Very well, all eyes.
Aye.
Aye.
Very well, Nonnaise out there, very well. I need a motion to appoint and confirm Kelly Grogan for patrol officer in the Woodline Police Division.
I'll make a motion for the appointment and confirmation of Kelly Grogan as a patrol officer.
A second.
All right, I heard the second, was that Mr. Lawson?
Yeah.
All eyes.
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve and appoint the confirmation of Sean Wright to the Woodline Police Division.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. I make a motion to approve and confirmation of Officer Sean Wright.
A second.
Then Mr. Burke Halter second the motion.
Yes.
Very well, all eyes.
Aye.
Very well, Nonnaise. I need a motion to approve the confirmation appointment of Tyra Nichols to the Woodline Police Division.
Make a motion to approve the confirmation and appointment of Officer Tyra, Tyra?
Tyra. Tyra.
Tyra Nichols. To Police Department, Woodline Police Department. I'll second.
All eyes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, team, I appreciate that. And Chief, I'll give you a call, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of council, thank you.
No worries, no worry, thank you. All right, committee reports, committee of the whole, Mr. Lawson?
Hello, Woodline, committee of the whole, we met May 11th, 2021, and the meeting started at 6:07. Those in attendance were all council members, Brown, Burke Halter, Boyd, Fitzgerald, Trey Bue, and myself as chair, Robert Lawson. Also in attendance were Jerry, Jerry, Tim, Anthony, Paula, Chief Johnson, Carter, and four. We started our agenda and first thing we covered was employment contracts for Village Police Division. And Mr. Tillman offered consideration for council to offer candidates who are going to enroll in the academy incentive payment plans to come work for Woodline. And the Baldwin Mayor's Court system, the current software of the Mayor's Court is not effective and has deficiencies on the court side of business. The cost can be subsidized by the computer fund. The cost of the first year is $15,400. The maintenance after that is $3,000 a year. Then we also discussed Public Works. Tim stated that he's looking, he looked at three banks to get us a loan for $150,000 and the best one he came up with was US Bank and the interest rate was 1.96%. They're also putting together an estimate for Woodline that includes a pile package and a stainless steel bed for longevity of the truck. Then we went to the fire department. Fire department is getting a new engine in a few weeks and a ladder truck is being serviced. Also, we spoke to our community paramedicine program and their partners, which is Princeton and Lincoln Heights. This program will touch those who are homebound with language barriers connecting people and servicing needs of the community. The program also trains students in various professions. They recently finished shipping the vaccines for those who are homebound. And also in the fire department, they had a national picture for the Dennis Lowery Foundation, which was, they're very, very proud of that because it's like nationwide, so that was real good. Then also in the police division, we discuss the current contract for body cams and tasers through Annex for $17,000, the quote on the dash cameras and the current contract along holding data and storage in approximately $30,000. And then we'll look to see if we could purchase that for a cheaper price. Also, in the monthly report was the use of force and traffic safety data. Okay, then we went to Public Works. Mr. Tillman spoke on the maintenance, including Lee Crest, Woodstock, Ronnie, Taggart, and some of the other repairs on various streets. And then also the completment of Britain Terrace in 2022. Okay, then Mr. Brown stated the metro shelter will be replaced on Glendale Milford, it has been ordered. Also, Hamilton County Stormwater District, they started visiting sites and mapping is 85% complete. I'm getting finished. And the fire hydras, there were nine broken, so far five have been repaired. Then we talked about the tree board, new development going through planning commission will need the following guidelines for the tree boards to regards in their landscaping. Then we got to recreation. Pool will be open June 7th. There will be a number count of swimmers that can go inside the pool. And also too, Tim is overlooking the Swim Safe contract. Also on recreation, we talked about Memorial Day Walk, which is going to be held May 28th and that's going to be a participant with Wyoming. And then also recreation is hiring two part-time staff members. Then we went to a new business, Mrs. Boyd, she was concerned about the estimation completion of Harmony Park. And that pretty much concluded committee of the whole meeting on May 11th. And we finished up, I think it was like 8:06, that's all I had, Mayor.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Any questions?
One quick thing, Bobby, can you mention in regards, just because, you know, our residents are listening in, the traffic flow at Dairy Queen, I think that was one thing that we discussed, the traffic flow at Dairy Queen and that there are signs posted there now, but there was some discussion and suggestions about flashing lights being installed?
It was, and I think you just about pretty much covered what I would say, so we did discuss that. You kind of took my thunder on that, so.
Yeah, I just think it's important, you know, if anybody's listening in, if they haven't noticed that those signs are out and that there's still some ongoing discussion in regards to possibly getting a flashing light. That was part of our discussion, it still is ongoing.
Rosemary, did you have your hand up?
That's all right, well, actually, you said the pool will be open June the 7th. That is actually that she will be offering half-price pool memberships to residents until June 7th.
Oh, I did leave that out, thank you.
No worries. In terms of opening day, we'll listen to the report from either Paula or Jerry about that. But that's what, that June 7th is what she was referring to, that is correct.
Right.
Okay, again, any questions for Mr. Lawson, committee of the whole? All right, having none, finance committee, Ms. Trey Bue.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, so the finance committee met on May 19th.
17.
I just lost my voice, apologies. I'm sorry, May 17th.
Yes.
Finance committee met. The committee members present were myself, Pamela Fitzgerald, Robert Lawson. Also in attendance was Finance Director Tim Engel, Esther Boyd, Rosemary Brown, Mayor Poehl, and Garrett Burke Halter. We received an income tax update from the information that we received from Rita. There were $805,066.24 in April tax receipt distribution. Mr. Engel provided a breakdown of which funds those were deposited into. We also got an update on the total receipts and expenditures related to the road tax fund annually. So he shared figures from 2019, 2020, and 2021. So far in 2021, the receipts equal to $296,132.57 and disbursements totaled $92,542.42. To date, since the inception of the road tax fund, which was in 2019, so from 2019 through April of 2021, the total receipts was almost $1.7 million and disbursements was $778,941 and some change. He also shared that all deficits from January have been made up and tax revenues are currently 22% above revenues from the previous year and then 9% above tax revenues from 2019. They'll continue to monitor our tax collections as the year develops. We also had him review a number of reports as we do every month when we meet for finance committee, appropriations and revenue reports, receipts and expense reports, general fund receipts and disbursements, fund balances, bank reconciliation, overtime report, salary expense, negative fund balances. That is something that Tim has been working on since May of 2020. So it's important to note that the village has eliminated a total of $395,000 in negative fund balances. We also spent a little time talking about recreation income versus receipts and talked about the 2021 pool season. Looked at the entire pool budget, especially related to pool operations as well as some repairs to the pool. There was also a brief update on the American Rescue and Recovery Act Plan. A reminder that the village is set to receive $670,000 from the American Rescue Act Plan dollars have to be received this year and then the remaining have to be received 12 months after the first distribution. Not too much detail about what those funds can be spent on, but we should have some updates on that relatively soon. He also reminded us the tax budget is due in July and so him and his team will be working on that. Also has some information regarding a new dump truck for the Public Works Department and looking at purchasing that through US Bank. Also a reminder that this Auditor of State recorded the 2021 Local Government Officials Conference and those recordings are available, so there was a site provided for that. Also briefly talked about some legislation that will be coming before us today. And then reminders for council to keep an eye on the pool levy that's set to expire in 2022, fire and EMS staffing, the fire levy, and also bond refunding on the Woodline Community Center. And that was pretty much it and the meeting was adjourned at 7:34 PM.
All right, thank you, Ms. Trey Bue, any questions for Ms. Trey Bue in finance? Excuse me, finance? Having, excuse me, having the municipal managers report? Jerry? You're on mute? There you are. Hold on, Jerry? Team, can you hear Jerry?
It doesn't seem like he's coming through, Mayor.
I know. All right, we're gonna have to, all right, team, just give me a quick second, I'm signing my way. Jerry, can you come in my office? They can't hear you. Thank you. Sorry about that, one moment.
Hello, everyone. Okay. Sorry about that, I'll have to get my computer looked at. One of the things that I was going to mention was with our roadway projects, we were talking about Woodstock, Ronnie, and Tanniger, we're gonna have to get those surveyed because we don't believe the Cages Maps are close to where the right-of-way is. We're looking at busting out the end of Woodstock at that north end to make a wider turnaround for our vehicles as well as other service trucks on that street as well.
You're south end, Jerry.
Yes, the south, as I said, the north, it's the south end, yes. So we're looking at doing that, we have our engineer working on that for us. But we would like to continue to move forward with that. One of the other things is we haven't heard anything yet, but we're very, I'm gonna say 99.9% sure that we're gonna get funding through the municipal road fund program through the county for Lee Crest and we have a $200,000 match on that, but we'll get $100,000 through municipal road fund. We're hoping to have that completed as well. The, excuse me, the pool. Ms. Charman, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Brown, and myself met with the operations manager and one of their supervisors from Swim Safe today to go over the pool operations. And unfortunately, I have to report that the pool is not going to open on Monday as anticipated. We're gonna open it on Friday, June the 4th with a celebration opening. The reason for the delay is Swim Safe informed us today that all the lifeguards they have hired for our pool, since it's not filled, we be putting a lot of liability and risk exposing our community because our lifeguards that will be operating the pool will not have any training in advance of that Monday opening if we open on Memorial Day. So we decided that in the best interest is to wait until June the 4th, open the pool then. So the lifeguards will have ample time to be trained and will be ready to move forward throughout the summer. So we are looking for a kickoff on June the 4th. We're talking right now about what special events we could have possibly down there with that, maybe an ice cream truck or a food truck or something like that for that opening day kickoff. So Paula is working on that and I know the mayor will be involved with that. He's interested in finding out what we can do and we're working with Swim Safe on it as well. So unfortunately, we won't have it open for Memorial Day, but we will have it open June the 4th. Project's moving along. All the work should be completed this weekend. It's just that we have to make sure that pool's filled, properly filtered, and chemically balanced and then lifeguards are trained properly. Any questions on the pool? Okay, with that being said.
I have one. I have one.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown, I'm sorry, I'm on the side, I'm sorry.
That, yeah, that opening is just for the residents, right? Is that correct, Paula? The same as it was going to be?
For members, members who ever join or paid entry fee or membership.
I think if we do the opening, I don't know how, we're still gonna follow the protocol for COVID. So it'll be limited to the number of people that can be in there. So as far as it being free like it has been in the past, just to residents, it's probably not gonna be that way. And to be honest with you, because of everything that's happened today, we really haven't had a chance to just determine exactly what would happen. We did talk about half-price submission because we're still doing memberships half-off that day. We did talk about it being something in the evening, like 4 to 8, kind of make it special with, you know, either DJ, with definitely music for sure. If there's going to be, I don't know about an ice cream truck, but we were thinking about something special for those who were in attendance. We're not, we're just not sure, so we have to discuss that more tomorrow. I'll talk with Jerry about it and I'll talk to Shane and we'll put something together. But we do know for sure that we want it to be something that was in the evening that would give them, them as in Swim Safe even our staff, the opportunity to make sure that everything is in place the way that it needs to be. So when people come in, they'll be excited and we felt that it should just be for residents.
It should just be for residents, you said.
That's correct.
Yeah, we thought it was, should be just for residents, yeah.
Right, I agree. Thank you.
Pam, did you have a question? I see your hand up over there.
Yes, yes, I have a question in regards to the delay of the pool. And so you said it was because of Swim Safe's lifeguards. Did we let Swim Safe, inform Swim Safe when we needed the, as far as the opening day was scheduled for Memorial Day? Did we let them know that in advance? So they could plan appropriately to have the lifeguards trained and ready to go for the opening day?
Absolutely, they were informed. The unfortunate thing is they can't train their lifeguards until that pool is completely filled. And right now, they're filling the pool. And then they gotta make sure it's chemically balanced before they can have their lifeguards out of the water and do their training, their on-site training. We did have a week, like I told the mayor the other day, I said, it's been so hot and dry this week, everybody forgot how cold it was and we had. it's been so hot and dry this week, everybody forgot how cold it was, and we had snow late in the year. We also had some very rainy weather, and Swim Safe needed seventy-two hours in order to paint that pool, and that kind of pushed them back a whole week. So that's kind of the week that we're missing is, because of that weather, they just pushed their pool painting back. They didn't want to paint it until a lot of the concrete work was tore out and was ready to go, so I'm not casting stones on either the contractor or Swim Safe. We're just gonna deal with the cards that were dealt to us. And we're just gonna move along, and like Paula said, we're gonna have a celebration opening on June the fourth.
And I do get that, but I think that it has to do with that.
Can I say something with Swim Safe? Swim Safe has always said that they would need, once the construction was done, they would need at least a solid two weeks in order to do everything they need to do to open up safely. And it just so happens that everything finishing up, and there's just not enough time. It's, that's all. It just really isn't enough time for them to do everything they need to do. They've been working and doing what they can do while construction was going on, but trying to do the same thing simultaneously. And like Jerry said, with the pool and filling up the water, they wanted to train. Now, don't get, when Jerry says train, it doesn't mean that they don't know how to be lifeguards, and some of them aren't certified lifeguards. There's other training that they wanted to do onsite, so that if there were to have some kind of emergency or accident, they would be familiar with the site and be familiar with the procedures in our community. Not everyone who's lifeguarding is from Woodline, so, or has worked at this pool before, so there's a lot that needs to go on. I know there, I just left the pool like ten minutes ago, and they're down there now cleaning and still trying to do the things that they weren't able to do when all the construction was going on. Now that all the dust has settled, they're able to clean and do the things. But it, they have always said that they needed a good solid two weeks to do what they wanted to do to represent Swim Safe properly. And we were hoping that we would be able to give them that, and they were doing something simultaneously with construction, but it was just not possible. And to be honest with you, Swim Safe probably, you know, they're good troopers, and they said, well, if you want to open on Memorial Day, we'll open, but it's not, it's not feasible, it's not safe. And I'll be honest with you, I'd rather be safe and not have a case, someone getting hurt, and then our pool being shut down and making the news because we weren't properly prepared. I'd rather say no, let's not open, let's do it the right way. Just, so I'm just, I hope you understand, and I know it's not, Swim Safe is doing exactly what they're supposed to do, and they're responding exactly the way they're supposed to respond.
Right.
Yeah, I do.
Pam?
I do understand that, but I would say that is probably the construction schedule that delayed it. I do understand that. I would not say Swim Safe, because they have to do, you know, protocol after that, after it's finished to train the group, so I would say it's probably more of a construction delay. Then we're saying that it's Swim Safe, because Swim Safe, I'm sure, was probably ready to train their group after the construction was done, so.
Right. Okay, Pam, if I could add, and I, and I I, I get exactly where you're going with that, Pam. And again, I don't think that we're pointing a finger at anybody, but one of the things that came up was Swim Safe was having an issue not just for Woodline, but for multiple pools here in Cincinnati by recruiting lifeguards. So that, that was an issue right there, and we worked through that, but that was an issue not just for us, but for a lot of pools. Not being able to be at full capacity because they didn't have a lifeguard. So that, that was one of the things that, as in terms of the timing and where we were supposed to be open, you know, again, that week threw us off. Everything else, you know, I've been tracking the, the schedule when it was supposed to be done, and everything except the, you know, when we were supposed to paint that pool, that kind of threw us off with that rain that came at the end of the month. Last month. So, you know, my, my thing is that we recognize that, we are, don't want to open it and be unsafe and have a liability out there. So again, I'm just excited that we are going to open four days later, four days later. I just want to make this exciting, but I just wanted to point that out to you, Pam.
And do note that that a lot of people come by, and they're excited, they've been asking, when will we open? And we basically ask, are we opening Memorial Day? We're like, we've, I've said, unfortunately, that won't happen. But we will be opening that Friday, and they're like, oh, I'm so excited. They're just still, the excitement is still there, so that makes me feel good.
Okay.
I have a question.
Did I hear somebody, Pam?
Ms. Boyd.
Oh, Ms. Boyd, I'm on the side over here, I hear you, but I can't, go ahead.
Okay, Paula. Okay, I had, I should have written it down, I'm in shock, my blood rushed to my brain. But anyway, and I should ask Tim, I guess, or Brian, can we read the slide decision we made now, since we're not opening on time? I came down, I've been going past the pool and looking in the pool, but twelve thousand dollars to refurbish that slide, is it possible now that we have lost or not met our deadline that we could get a new slide? Is that possible, or even in the budget?
It's, it's already, the process is already started, Ms. Boyd, on that slide. Yes, they've already started the, it's some type of sanding or whatever, the preparation for the finish, that has already been started. So, yeah, unfortunately, that process have already been started.
And again, Swim Safe does the same thing every year. This is their process. My grandson worked for Swim Safe years at the Wyoming Pool. Process. There are also multiple municipalities have their pools open already. So this delay was for a bunch of reasons, but Swim Safe, I agree with Pam, we, it shouldn't even bring up their name, because pools, there is, even though there's multiple community pools are open, and I must have opened the first of May, so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you.
Very well.
Eric, can I, Mary, can I ask a question?
Sure, Bobby, there you are.
My hand up for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
My question is for Paula. It seems like, it seems like the pool is gonna be delayed a little bit. Have you, maybe?
Four days, y'all, four days.
Yeah, but have you actually maybe thought about for the residents of Woodline, maybe having them register at the recreation instead of having such a big congregation the day the pool opens? Maybe they can just get their memberships at the recreation, so that way they have their memberships, they can just proceed into the pool and swim?
Yeah, I mean, that's how it's set up now. If they want to get a membership, they should, they'll come up to the the rack and get their membership. That hasn't changed, that process. From my understanding, that's how it's all, I thought that's how it's always been.
Yeah, we're selling them now.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, let them know, because I wasn't, maybe everybody doesn't know that they are actually selling the memberships now, because I thought prior, I thought prior to that, they would get them the day of the pool, at the pool, and I thought that was just too much.
No.
Yeah, I don't, I thought they, when the pool opened on Memorial Day, that was free, so people didn't have to. They could buy it, it was half off that day as well, but it's gonna be half off, you know, it's been half, it's half off now until June the seventh. And we could extend it, since we're not opening up on time, you know, like, we can look into extending it.
Right, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Hold on, y'all, Jerry wants to add. I'll put in my report. Yeah, but you know what? Hold on, Paula?
Yes.
Are you all done? I'm sorry, I see you, you're still on my screen here. I apologize.
I'm finished.
All right, all right. Jerry had one other thing that he wanted to report on to council.
Excuse me, I received an email this morning from Cindy Chandler. She's the one that orchestrated the Clean Walk Project. And she wrote, I would like to give a final report to you, Mayor Paul and Council, please share during tonight's meeting. The Clean Walk Project was a success. Thank you again for the support of your team. Collectively, we had fifteen volunteers that hauled over twenty-five bags of litter. The target areas were Riddle Road, Woodline Boulevard, the hike and bike trail, the ball fields, Woodline Park, Community Center, Rogue Road, Jones Alley, Chester Road, Prairie, and Springer. And she went, kudos. Kudos to everyone.
Springfield Pike, Mayor.
Hold on, let me finish. And I want to add here also that we also did part of Springfield Pike as well. So, and it said, thank you, Cindy Chandler. So I wanted to report on that tonight. Thank you, Cindy, for all your efforts, your great work.
Yes, great job, good stuff. And thanks to Public Works and the volunteers who, who helped us with that. Public Works came along. I picked up the bags, so Tony, thank you to you and your team, especially our volunteers who came out. We have volunteers from Sharonville Kiwanis Club that came out with us and helped, and some new residents came out. So we're gonna continue that. We, we said we were gonna kind of put some dates out there so we can continue that. But it was some good stuff, so exciting to hear that. So appreciate that, again, for Cindy Chandler and her efforts. Finance report, finance director's report.
Not very many things to add outside of the finance committee meeting minutes. We did note in the meeting minutes, the tax budget was in the works. I actually have the draft tax budget completed. I sent that to the village manager to, to review. We should have that ready for council here for committee as a whole. The goal would be to schedule the hearing for the tax budget on the, about a half an hour before the council meeting in, in June. That way, we can approve it via resolution and send it to the county before that June fifteenth deadline, or May, excuse me, July fifteenth deadline. And we won't have to have a special meeting or anything like that. Public Works Truck, we've gotten estimates from Freightliner for the chassis, as well as a couple other investments for some, from some different vendors for the body. So we'll be moving along with that here soon and bringing something to council as well. They do still have it on my agenda to contact our group that helps out with our bond refundings, or I think refinancing related to the Community Center Bond. And then lastly, with the American Rescue Plan Act money. I did attend a webinar earlier this month related to information on that. They noted some of the final papers were out on that, on that money, so the things released by the federal government. I have those printed, and I'm kind of going through those. So as I kind of continue to read into that, I'll kind of see what all we can do with that money. And then there's supposed to be another update from the same Ohio Budget Group as well here in June, so I'll attend that as well. And hopefully have some additional things to report to everybody by next finance committee meeting. Other than that, I, I don't have anything else, just looking for the approvals on our, on our reports in the, in the committee package.
All right, any questions for Tim and his report? Having none, I need a motion for the approval of the bank reconciliation, the receipt listing and payment listing.
Make a motion for the approval of the bank. I'm sorry. Bank receipts for the payments and receipts. Is that right?
The approval of the bank reconciliation, receipt listing and payment listing.
Okay, the bank recrea, Jesus Christ.
Reconciliation.
Took some sinus medication, y'all, I'm crazy. Bank recorso.
Reconciliation.
That, yeah, reconciliation listings.
Receipt listing.
Receipts and, and payments, listings, sorry about that.
No worries.
Motion. I'll second it.
Most men move properly, second, all eyes?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, thanks so much. That comes down on my, this is my report. Law Director's report.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
All right, my report, got a couple things. Team, on Friday night, which is May the twenty-eighth at seven thirty, myself and Mayor Hoffmeyer out of the, of the city of Wyoming are partnering with, for a memorial walk. And the purpose of the walk is, we just want to pay homage to those that, people that lost their lives during the COVID. And so I asked council to join me at seven thirty. I know that the cicadas are out there, but they don't bother you, they really don't. So I asked the council to join me at seven thirty on Friday night for the, the lighting. We'll have a candle lighting and the small walk, and we'll end our walk at Mount Zion with our closing remarks at Mount Zion Woodline. So again, that starts at seven thirty, so I would love for everybody to join me on Friday for that. Also, I am planning a graduation ceremony tentatively for June the twelfth. Tim, I'll give you a call once we get off the line tonight, need your help on something with that. But I'm looking at a tentative date for June the twelfth. And again, I've asked that people send me graduates' names, I've only got a few. And so what I did was, I took a ride on yesterday, in, in terms of our high school. If I seen a sign in the yard, it's kind of how I identify that that was you. So again, if you know of anybody, again, that's college included, please make sure that I get that as soon as possible. I want, I want council to be aware as, as well as the public that we've been talking about the gun range for some time, and that's just been ongoing conversation. Just know that five million dollars out of the American Rescue Fund has been set aside from the county. The county has set aside five million dollars to relocate the gun range. And all three commissioners are on board with that. I think it's gonna happen. It's a matter of working some logistics out, and again, I believe they are nine million dollars short of that. So I know that I am to be in front of the commissioners on next week and talk about just how unsafe I look at it from the residents that are greatly impacted, especially over in Timberland. So I just wanted to bring that up to you as I get some information, want to keep council and the public aware of what's going on over there with the gun range. And then lastly, I just need an approval of the mayor's monthly court, statement, monthly court statement.
So I need I'll make a, I'll make a motion for approval of the mayor's court monthly statement.
Thanks, Pam.
I'll second.
All right, most men move properly, second, all eyes?
Hi.
Very well. All right, very well. I do want to make sure that we do a good shout out for all of our graduates, especially here in our village that came out of Princeton, some came out of Princeton, some came out of some of the parochial schools. But again, congratulations to all of our graduates, either high school, college. We just want to congratulate you, but we want to do a small ceremony, intentively set for June twelfth. So get me those names as quickly as possible. Any questions for me?
Mayor.
Ms., Ms. Boyd?
When the memorial walk, where does it start from?
At the community center. I'm sorry, Ms. Boyd, thank you for
At our rec center, our community.
Yeah.
Yes, at our rec center.
At our community center, at the Woodline Rec Center, and it will end at the Mount Zion Baptist Church of Woodline. And the route is not that very long.
Okay.
I need a walking partner, Ms. Boyd, so I'm counting on you.
Definitely.
I got you, all right.
Do we need to, do we need to provide our own candles?
I will have some candles available for you, so if you don't, if you don't have one, I will, I will have some until they run out.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, so I don't have any other comments to, to, to report tonight. We'll ride along into legislation. Emily?
Hello? Sorry.
There you are.
I got halfway through it. Um, uh, the first item is Resolution ten twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a billing services agreement with the City of Cincinnati for the collection of waste collection and fire hydrant fees.
All right, I need a motion for passage of Resolution number ten twenty twenty-one.
Is this where we can ask questions?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
I have a quick question in regards to the fire hydrant. So
Sure.
I think there's still a handful of fire hydrants that have not been serviced yet or that were waiting. So will the money that we have from the Village of Woodline, are, will we pay for those uh, fire hydrants that are still waiting to be serviced, or will it fall under this new resolution for the fees? You, you kind of understand my question?
Derek?
We have so many fire hydrants that are still waiting to be fixed.
Got you.
Okay.
Okay, I understood what you were saying, uh-huh.
Mr. Lawson did report, and it was in the, uh, media, the whole report. Uh, there are still, I believe, five hydrants out of the nine that were completely out of service that have not yet been serviced. Those will be serviced. Uh, this resolution is only for an agreement. So since a water works, uh, we'll collect the fees, not only for our waste bill, billing, but also the fire hydrant billing. Uh, and that they will collect it and return our majority of that money over to us. They do keep a fee. That's what this is for.
All right, thanks.
You seem, you seemed a little puzzled.
Ma'am, did you get, and, okay, because we, we, the money we are collecting, we are using.
We also have grant money coming in next year, I believe it is, uh, from CDDG for a fire hydrant repair as well. Uh, they didn't give us any money this year, but, uh, they did next year.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, so we have still some fire hydrants that are not, that are waiting to be serviced for whatever reason that that is, but they still need to be fixed. So do, are we still planning to fix those in the current budget on our end? Or do we have to wait until this possibly passes, until the fees are collected from our residents? And then we're gonna fix what's the remainers that's left? That's my question.
No, we'll continue to move forward with the repair of the hydrants. We did have some money in the budget to do the repairs. And to me, surprisingly, the fees coming from Hammond County to fix those hydrants is much less than anticipated. So hopefully we can get more, uh, hydrants fixed than we originally anticipated with that money we budgeted. But we'll continue to move forward on that.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, I think, uh, was a motion?
A motion was not made yet.
All right, again, I need a motion for passage of Resolution number ten twenty twenty-one.
I make a motion for passage of Resolution ten twenty-one.
Second.
Motion been moved properly, second roll call on the passage, please.
Eric Berkalter?
Aye.
Esther Boye?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Uh, Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Sibiu?
Aye.
Very well, thank you.
Uh, the next item is Resolution number eleven twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with the Baldwin Group, Inc., for Mayor's Court Software and Services.
I need a motion to, I need a motion for passage of Resolution number eleven twenty twenty-one.
I'm making a motion, make a motion for passage of Resolution eleven twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it. This is Robert.
Motion been moved properly, second roll call on the passage, please.
Eric Berkalter?
Aye.
Esther Boye?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Sorry, I.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Sibiu?
Aye.
Very well, thank you.
Uh, the next one is Resolution number twelve twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the Village of Woodline to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program.
I need a motion for passage of ro- Resolution number twelve twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion for passage of Resolution twelve twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it. This is Robert.
Motion been moved properly, second roll call on the passage.
Eric Berkalter?
Aye.
Esther Boye?
Yes.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Sibiu?
Aye.
Very well, thank you.
Uh, and the next item is Resolution number thirteen twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with PSS Contractors LLC to resurface the swimming pool slide.
All right, I need a motion for, I, I need a motion for passage of Resolution number thirteen twenty twenty-one.
Make a re- uh, uh, motion for passage of Resolution thirteen twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved properly, second roll call on the passage.
Eric Berk- Berkalter?
Aye.
Esther Boye?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Kiana Sibiu?
Aye.
Very well. Emily, do you have a twelve twenty twenty-one?
Uh, yeah, hold on, I got off, I moved off the legislation.
How she did that?
Twenty-one was the resolution authorizing us to participate in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program.
We covered it, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just didn't put it in the right, in the right pile. All right, team, I thank you, I apologize for that. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Emily. Emily, is there anything else that, uh, becomes for legislation?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor. Mayor.
Yeah, Tim.
I think if we want to do the fifty percent discount on the pool passes, we've got to do a, a motion for that.
Yes, council approved that item.
Can I ask why?
Because it's an adjustment with, to a fee that's established by council. So council would need to take that action if you want to give a discount for the pool membership.
So in doing that, we would need an approximate, we would need an actual end date, right?
Yes, if this is just a temporary measure.
Right, so we'll need a beginning and end date.
Can I put, is it a half, is it half off the membership for residents, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm not, well, Paula's there, I'm not sure.
It's half off for residents and if you're a non-resident, it's just half off.
Okay, and would it be fair to put a tentative day in there for, let's just say, June the fourteenth? We'll take it out to June the fourteenth?
I, I'm fine with that.
Would have to be a, a resolution, Emily, or a four vote?
We can do that, uh, since it's just a temporary measure, we can do that by motion. Just so I understand, it would be a, a motion to, um, offer fifty percent off of the pool membership between now and June fourteenth. Is that, is that what's being proposed?
That is correct. So is there a motion on the floor to offer fifty percent off of membership for residents through, tentatively through June the fourteenth?
Did I hear Paula say it's residents and non-residents?
That's what Paula said, yes.
So are we doing residents and non-residents or just residents?
Well, we giving our residents a fifty percent discount. Right?
That was, that was what I was thinking, but Paula said both, so we have to make a decision.
It's up to council to what they want to do.
The council can do, if you want to do just residents, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I'm in.
I like both.
I'm, I'm okay with, go ahead.
I go, I participate every year for many years, and I've always paid my half.
Okay.
Um, but we, we pay more. So I'm asking council to please extend that to non-residents, please.
I'm kind of okay with that.
Now, so what is your pleasure?
Seems like a consensus.
So
I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
I need a motion to approve a half percent, a half, fifty percent off of membership for residents and non-membership, non-residents through June the fourteenth.
Don't move, I'm at Kiana, I'll make the most.
That's my mo- uh, that's, I'm asking for a motion. Kiana, move properly, second.
Yes.
Has it been properly second?
I second it.
All eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good stuff. All right, so we have that. Good. Thank you. Any new business for the council? Having none, I need a motion. Paula? Paula?
Yes, sir.
I thought I heard you.
No, Ms. Boyd.
Oh, Ms. Boyd, I don't be seeing your face, there you are.
I don't know, you see me. Um, is there any update on Harmony Park, first of all?
Um.
Past the, we put it out and some plans out here, and we last time, no, not enough people or no one had responded, have we moved forward? Uh, what's the next step in trying to handle that situation? Is there any update on that?
Harmony Park?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Boyd, what was your question again? You said notification?
On Harmony Park, because last time we said there was some plans put out, and, um, Mr. Thien had not gotten a response or hadn't gotten the responses that he wanted. So I, we, I thought we talked about doing something, you know, the next step and trying to responses, so that we can get Harmony Park, uh, going here. Uh, and, uh, again, we don't have a tentative date, but maybe we need to, if it's possible, come together and give a projected date. I'm sure you can't give one.
Right.
Sometime in twenty-two, something, you know, because people are concerned that, that, that we're not even gonna do Harmony Park. And I know we are.
Let me start by saying that Harmony Park is gonna happen, Ms. Boyd, it's gonna happen. Um, but I like to, I really like to table that, that particular comment about Harmony Park because we haven't really gotten enough, uh, feedback like we want to, to really have that extended conversation. But trust me, we talk about Harmony Park almost on a daily in terms of the next step. So we didn't get a lot of feedback like we wanted to from the public. We really wanted more feedback. Um, not like we want to. Um, but again, that's an ongoing theme, Ms. Boyd. I know you keep saying, what's that, you know, that date look like? What's the completion date? I don't know if we could really say that without having some concrete plans in place from like engineering, all of that good stuff. I would have to say that. Now, Jerry might say something different, but I'm just saying at it from a engineering standpoint. Ms. Boyd?
I don't think she's on anymore.
Yeah, she
Where'd she go?
I don't know. I, I'll call her, I'll give her a shout. I'll give her a shout. After the motion, all right. Uh, is there anything else for, for us or the council? I'm sorry. Having none, is there a motion for an adjournment?
I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All right, properly moved, second for adjournment, all eyes?
Aye.
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 Yeah, Pam, I'll be giving you a call as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.